So, a little bit of review. So last week, we were in Smyrna, and we were talking about just the different things that are happening there. I shared with you some, I know it's confusing in terms of timelines, and some different views on how the world ends, especially in the Book of Revelation. And so, all of that is in your handout. And so, just encourage you to meditate on that, be aware of it. I mean, we're gonna talk about it a whole lot more. And so, as with anything, it's about, you gotta stick with it, and you gotta stay with the material. And just, you know, when stuff doesn't make sense, just keep on going, just keep moving. And so, again, just as a reminder, you can go to the website, princeofpeace.org/revelation. You can get all of the material handouts for our time in Revelation. So today, we're gonna be in the city of Pergamum. And so, this is in Revelation, chapter 2. This is beginning in verse 12. And so, a little bit of the background of Pergamum. In those days, all of these cities in Asia, Asia Minor, all of the seven churches of Revelation, they were all fairly large cities. But obviously Ephesus was likely the largest one. But one of the things that was very unique about Pergamum is that each one of these cities, a lot of times what they did is they had a particular temple devoted to a particular god. Pergamum was really unique in that this was a smorgasbord of pagan worship. So pretty much any temple that you could, you wanted, was in Pergamum. So there was a temple to Caesar there during the reign of Trajan. They built a temple to worship Trajan. And obviously, you know that when they're building these temples, they have the word Curios all over the temple. Curios means what? Means lord. So when the Bible is talking about Jesus Christ is Curios, they're pushing back, right? And these are also things that say, no, Caesar, Trajan, they're not lord, Jesus is lord. It's big deal, okay? So there was a temple also to Dionysius. So for those of you that are wine lovers, he was the god of winemaking. And so, that was kind of the, you know, if you really wanted to go have a good time at the bar, you would go to the temple of Dionysius. There was also a temple to Athena. So this is, you know, in Athens and the Parthenon, probably the biggest one. But there was also a temple to Athena. Probably the one thing that you can see in this picture that you see here on the bottom left, that was the temple to Zeus. And so, that was a big claim to fame that Pergamum was pretty famous for. So let's go into Revelation, chapter 2, and let's just read a little bit here. So as a reminder, at the end of chapter 1, we see this image, right? John sees this person that has a golden sash and a robe. So it's this priest and king. And so, it's Jesus, and so he turns around, he falls dead. And Jesus picked, not dead, but falls to the floor, afraid, picks him up, and really reveals who he is. And so, this pattern of Jesus saying, "I'm walking in and amongst the lampstands, I'm walking in and amongst the churches." In other words, "I know what's going on." And so, he starts off by saying to the church in whatever, right? "I know what's going on." He actually has some words of encouragement, meaning, "I know that you're doing these things, and keep it up." But then he says, "I have some things against you." And then what he does is, at the end of the letter, there's a call to repentance. So that's just kind of the pattern here. So here is the church in Pergamum. Verse 12. "And to the angel of the church in Pergamum, right, the words of him who has the sharp, two-edged sword." So this goes all the way back to, not all the way back, but to chapter 1, where we see this image of a person who is a priest and king with a sword, a two-edged sword coming out of his mouth. And so, when we see this two-edged sword in the Bible, it always refers to the word of God. So Hebrews, chapter 4, this two-edged sword. Why do you think it might have two edges to it, though? What do you think about that? Ah, hey, you guys are good Lutherans. You're awesome. So there is a, so a two-edged sword is law and gospel. God's word comes to us in two ways. A word of law, but there's also a word of gospel, right? So Hebrews 4 says that the word of God is a sharp two-edged sword that pierces through the division of marrow and bone. So it really, sometimes we think that we read the Bible, but the Bible, the word of God really reads us, really diagnoses us. It's like a scalpel that cuts through. And so, that's what's happening here. Now verse 13 is where it starts to really get interesting. So verse 13. "I know where you dwell, where Satan's throne is; yet you hold fast my name, and you did not deny my faith," which could also be translated is "faith in me", which probably a better translation, "deny my faith even in the days of Antipas, my faithful witness who was killed among you where Satan dwells." Okay, so let's stop there for a moment. So what does it mean where Satan dwells? Well, some believe that that means Zeus, the temple of Zeus. I think that that's a fine understanding, that could be. I think that there's also another one that I find very interesting. And that is also, there is a temple to the god Asclepius. So Asclepius was the god of healing. And so, this is called the Asclepion, and it's in Pergamum. And Asclepius was the god of healing. Does anybody know why that's important? Anybody? Okay, well, we'll find out here. So this is a picture of Asclepius. So notice what he has. He has a staff, and there's a snake wrapped around it. So where do we also see a staff with a snake wrapped around it? Medical. So here's the World Health Organization. This is their logo. See the staff and the snake? It comes from Asclepius. Here is United States Army Medical Department. So this is what you typically, so you have the wings, and then you have two snakes that are wrapped around this pole. This comes from Asclepius. So what you have is, you have all of these people who have all kinds of different diseases and sicknesses. And so, if you're a person in the first century, and you live in the area, maybe you don't live in Pergamum, maybe you live in Ephesus. Well, they don't have an Asclepion in Ephesus. So what do you do? Man, I'm really sick. It's time for us to go to the Asclepion in Pergamum. So I think it's interesting because, again, what's the first image that we see for Satan? He's a what? He's a serpent, he's a snake, right? So again, so I'm gonna just, it could be Zeus, it could be Asclepion. I think that there's some great snake stories in the Bible. And so, anytime you go into a passage of scripture, one of the things that you have to ask yourself is, "Okay, how does this help me get to Jesus? How does it help me share the gospel?" And I think, as I'm just thinking about, if it is where Satan dwells, and his throne being Asclepius helps me think about, "Oh, I can see how that connects to this scripture, and this scripture, and this scripture." So other than Genesis, chapter 3, anybody can, anybody think of another snake story? Yeah? All right, thank you. So we're gonna go to Numbers, chapter 21. And this is verse 4. So Numbers, chapter 21, verse 4. "From Mount Hore they set out..." So just context here. They've come out of Egypt, and they're kind of wandering around the wilderness, and they're eating this food that's called manna, which is translated in Hebrew, it literally means, "what is it?" And so, they're eating this, "what is it?" And it's fallen from the sky, remember? And you can't hoard it, you can't keep it, because it spoils. And so, they're eating this food, and they start to grumble. But I'll remind you that during this time, and it's very important that we remember this, is that God sees His relationship with His people as equal, as a reflection of what marriage is. So God sees that He is the bridegroom, and His people are the bride. So God comes into, He rescues His people out of Egypt. And then what they do is, they go out and they wander around the wilderness for 40 years. Remember why they wandered around the wilderness for 40 years? Remember why? 10 were bad and 2 were good, remember? Okay, so Caleb and Joshua went to spy the promised land, and 10 of them came back and said, "Oh, we can't do it, it's not gonna work." And Joshua and Caleb said, "No, let's go, let's take them." And so, God said, "Because you were afraid, and you didn't trust, now you're gonna wander around the wilderness for 40 years." So the Bible describes that wandering around in the wilderness for 40 years. It describes it like God's honeymoon. I don't know about your honeymoon, but my honeymoon wasn't wandering around the wilderness for 40 years. But that's how the Bible describes it. And God loved it. And we think to ourselves, "Why would you love it? Your people were complaining all the time." "We hate this food, and we don't have any meat." "Okay, here's some quail." "We don't have any water." "Okay, strike the rock." All this stuff is happening, right? But God loved it. Why? "They were dependent upon Him, and threes a crowd." Imagine your honeymoon, and it's not just you and your spouse, but it's your spouse and your mistress. That's no honeymoon. But God loved it because it was just them. They were in this covenant relationship with them. And by that time, the people of God had not given themselves into idolatry yet. Really important. So the reason I say all of this is because many times people say to me something like, "Pastor, I really have a hard time understanding the Bible." And what happens, a lot of times what people mean by that is they mean, "I don't know where to find it in the book, chapter, verse." But the scriptures, think about this, is that, I mean, book, chapter, verse Bibles. I mean, we're living in a day where book, chapter, verse Bibles are a new thing. And so, how did the scriptures get handed down? Verbally, orally? It was all about stories. And so, these stories are what's really important. And understand, how do the stories fit into the overall narrative of salvation that God has accomplished through Jesus? How does that fit in? And that's the whole point. So let's go back to Numbers, chapter 21. And I just want you to just think about the story. And don't worry about, "Oh, what does this verse say?" Or just be able to tell the story, okay? So verse 4. "From Mount Hore they're coming out of Egypt. They set out by the way of the Red Sea to go around the land of Edom. And the people became impatient on the way. And the people spoke against God and against Moses, saying, 'Why have you brought us up out of Egypt to die in the wilderness? For there is no food and no water, and we loathe this worthless food.'" How many of you, how many of you, when God provides, grumble against it? Am I the only one? God provides you good things, and we just grumble against what God provides. So verse 6. "Then the Lord sent fiery serpents." Now, most people, this could refer to their color, it could refer, most people would say, "No, it's about what it feels like when they bite you." So they're venomous, right? "So then the Lord sent fiery serpents among the people, and they bit the people, so that many people of Israel died." Let me ask you this, why would God do that? So go all the way back to Genesis, chapter 3. "And Adam and Eve they sinned." And then what happens? They go, yeah, they're cursed. And who puts the curse on them? God puts a curse on them. So Adam and Eve say, "Wait, wait, 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 wait. Just put it back to the way it was, just, can we have a mulligan here?" And God says, "No." Why is that? Because God knows that you're gonna continue to, it's gonna get worse, and worse, and worse, and worse, and worse, all the way up until that snake is dead. So here, if you're Israel, and you have sinned against God, and God is upset, and He sends, you'd be like, "Okay, just send the snakes away." But He doesn't do that, does He? Let's keep reading. Verse 7. "And the people came to Moses and said, 'We have sinned, for we have spoken against the Lord and against you. Pray to the Lord that he take away the serpents from us.'" So Moses prayed for the people. And the Lord said to Moses, though this isn't in there, He basically said, "No, I won't take the serpents away. But what I will do is..." Keep reading. "...make a fiery serpent and set it on a pole, and everyone who is bitten, when he sees it, shall live." So Moses made a bronze serpent, set it on a pole, and if a serpent bit anyone, he would look at the bronze serpent and live. So imagine this is, God sends these fiery serpents, they come and they bite the people, and then He says, "You gotta make a bronze serpent, and then look at that." And I want you to just think about the people that are living in Pergamum. I want you to think about the people who are coming to Asclepius for healing. And here are the Christians of Pergamum, and the Christians of today. We have an opportunity, and we have a responsibility, to say that there is no healing, there is no peace apart from the Lord Jesus Christ. There is no healing, there is no peace apart from Him who has crushed the head of the serpent. And so, where do we go for an assurance of healing and provision, and God's love and grace for us? Where do we go? We go to scripture, but think about an event, where do we go? No, 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 I'm talking, yes, I mean, don't think that to not go to the doctor, that's not the point. But the cross is where we go, okay? So I love this picture, is in terms of where, what's happening at the cross. And so, there is this, that serpent, the bronze serpent on the pole is saying, "You gotta look at that, because there's a day coming when that serpent is going to die. And that serpent is gonna be defeated, and it's at the cross of Jesus Christ." And so, this is where the people of Pergamum say to people around them, they're coming to, "Hey, wait, no, 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 no. There is no healing apart from Jesus Christ. There is no, this is satanic, this is demonic, what's happening with Asclepius. And so, look to Jesus, look to Him who has crushed the head of the serpent." You see that? So that's what, this is what they are called to do, and called to share. All right, questions on that? Make sense? Okay? So that's a really good snake story. All right, let's go back to Revelation, chapter 2. We're still in verse 13. "Yet you hold fast my name, and you did not deny faith in me, even in the days of Antipas, my faithful witness who was killed among you where Satan dwells." So this Antipas, we know almost nothing about him. There's a lot of folklore and legend about him. We really know almost nothing about him, other than his name and the fact that he was martyred in Pergamum. So many people think that Stephen, right, was the first martyr of the church. But really, people weren't called Christians, or the church, or people of the way, not until after Stephen. And so, really, if you wanna probably be technical, Antipas is probably the very first Christian martyr who died for the name of Jesus in the church. Now again, what I want you to see is, what does it mean when it says, "Yet you hold fast my name"? What does that mean? So turn in your Bibles to Romans, chapter 10. So this is verse 9. Romans 10, verse 9. "If you confess with your mouth that Jesus is Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised Him from the dead, you will be saved; for with the heart one believes and is justified, and with the mouth one confesses and is saved." So turn back to Revelation, chapter 2 now. What I want you to see is that, "you hold fast my name." What does that mean? Well, it doesn't just mean you kind of stand up and you say something. And yes, that's important to confess with your mouth and believe in your heart, right? That's important. But how many of you have gone through the rite of confirmation in the Lutheran Church? How many of you have gone through the rite of new membership in the Lutheran Church? Should be all of you. Here's what it sounds like in what is given over to you. It sounds something like this. "Do you commit to remain faithful to the faith, even unto death?" And what do we all say? "Yeah, yeah, yeah." Right? Yeah, wow, this is kind of serious here, right? But we look at that, and we say that in confirmation, we say that in new members, we say that all the time, and we just kind of gloss over that. When we read the scriptures, they knew it to be true completely. They didn't mess around when they heard somebody say, "Do you intend to remain faithful even unto death?" Before you would reject your Lord Jesus Christ. And they say, "Absolutely." Are we prepared? Are you prepared? I think we think to ourselves, "Nah, I'm not gonna die for the name of Jesus." Really? I talked to a pastor friend years ago. And I've never forgotten that he said to me, he was a pastor in Ethiopia. And he said, "It's easier to be a Christian in Ethiopia than it is to be a Christian in the United States." Because in Ethiopia, in that region, you had to wake up every single day and say, "Hmm, today might be the day." "Today might be the day that somebody says, 'Do you believe in Jesus?'" And it cost you your life. In this country, "Do you intend to remain faithful to Christ even unto death, other than before you would reject Him?" We all say, "Yep." Right? But it's that, this is what it's talking about in verse 13. "That you hold fast even unto death before rejecting Christ." So this is what it's talking about, is that, "even in the days of Antipas, my faithful witness who was killed among you where Satan dwells." All right, verse 14. Now here's where Jesus has a few things against them. "But I have a few things against you. You have some there who hold the teachings of Balaam, who taught Balak to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel, so that they might eat foods sacrificed to idols and practice sexual immorality." So turn back, I want, we're just gonna read this story. I cannot tell you, I can't express how pivotal, how important this story is in the whole Bible. So turn back, it's just one chapter later, after the bronze serpent story. It's in Numbers, chapter 22. And all the Psalms pick up what's happening with Balaam. First Peter picks up Balaam. I mean, it's all over the scriptures. And so, here's the point, is that, again, if you are a, if you're a Hebrew living in the promised land during this time, or during the, after the Exodus, and after they come in and they settle the promised land, all the way up until their exile and all of that, you're kind of asking the question, you know, you hear about this faithful God, right? You hear about, "Oh, we're God's people, He's faithful to us." And then you ask your parents, "But then why are all these bad things happening to us? Why is all this happening? Why is Midian, why have they conquered us? Mom and dad, I thought you told me that we're God's people, what gives?" And so, what do you do? You tell the story. And one of the stories that you're gonna tell is you're gonna tell the story of Balaam. So Numbers 22. "And this is the pivotal moment where the honeymoon is over. From this moment on, all the way through the Old Testament, Israel got wrapped around the axle with idolatry." This is the moment where they fell. All right, Numbers 22, verse 1. "Then the people of Israel set out and camped in the plains of Moab beyond the Jordan at Jericho. And Balak, the son of Zippor, saw all that Israel had done to the Amorites." Now what does that mean? Again, I watched Indiana Jones the other day. So remember, there's about 2 million Israelites that are coming out of Egypt. And they're wandering around the wilderness, and then at some point in time, God tells them to build a box. And what's that box? The Ark of the Covenant. And so, then here's what happens, is the Ark of the Covenant goes before Israel, and basically just wipes out, just conquers nation after nation after nation. And so, then what happens is, you have these kings, and they're like, okay, they're looking at the horizon, they're saying, "Okay, there's all these people, and they got this little box that they're carrying at the front, and they're like, 'We're toast.'" And the Israelites are just kind of like, "Ah, you know, here's the box." And then God does His thing, and wipes some people out, and conquers them. So now here's what's happening, is Balak is saying, "Here's Israel coming, did they got the box? They got the box, oh, we gotta do something about that." Okay? That's what's happening. So verse 3. "And Moab was in great dread of the people, because they were many. Moab was overcome with fear of the people of Israel. And Moab said to the elders of Midian, 'This horde will now lick up all that is around us as the ox licks up the grass of the field.'" So Balak, the son of Zippor, who was king of Moab at the time, sent messengers to Balaam, the son of Beor, at Pethor, which is near the river in the land of the people of Ammon, to call him, saying, "Behold, a people has come out of Egypt. They cover the face of the earth, and they are dwelling opposite me. Come now, curse this people for me, since they are too many for me." So here is Balak's, here's his strategy. His strategy is, find somebody that is among them, and find somebody who kind of has the ear of God. And what I want you to do is, bring them to me so that they will curse God's people. That's my, that's his military strategy, is try to curse God's people, okay? So they find this guy named Balaam, and we'll see what happens. "So it says, 'Perhaps I shall be able to defeat them and drive them from the land, for I know that he whom you bless is blessed, and he whom you curse is cursed.'" "So the elders of Moab and the elders of Midian departed with the fees for divination in their hand." So this is his payment, Balaam's payment for cursing God's people. "And they came to Balaam and gave him Balak's message." Now, one of the questions that you gotta ask is, is Balaam a follower of the one true God? Is he? And it's kind of, eh, I don't know if he is or not, let's see. Where were we? Okay, verse 8. "And he said to them, 'Lodge here tonight, and I will bring back word to you as the Lord speaks to me.'" So the Lord is speaking to Balaam. "So the princes of Moab stayed." "So the princes of Moab stayed with Balam. And God came to Balam and said, 'Who are these men with you?' And Balam said to God, 'Balak, the son of Zippor, king of Moab, has sent me, saying, 'Behold, a people has come out of Egypt, and it covers the face of the earth. Now come curse them for me; perhaps I shall be able to fight against them and drive them out.'" God said to Balam, "You shall not go with them; you shall not curse the people, for they are blessed." So Balam rose in the morning and said to the princes of Balak, "I can't do it. Go to your own land, for the Lord has refused to let me go with you." So the princes of Moab rose and went to Balak and said, "Balam refuses to come with us." But the story continues. Verse 15. Balam doesn't give up. Once again, Balak sent princes more in number and more honorable than these. "So I gotta send my chief negotiators." "And they came to Balam and said to him, 'Thus says Balak, the son of Zippor. Let nothing hinder you from coming to me; for I will surely do you great honor, and whatever you say to me, I will do. Come curse this people for me.'" In other words, Balak is saying, "Here is a blank check. Whatever you want, I will pay it." Okay? So what does Balam do? Verse 18. "But Balam answered and said to the servants of Balak, 'Though Balak were to give me his house full of silver and gold, I could not go beyond the command of the Lord my God to do less or more. So you two, please stay here tonight, that I may know what the Lord will say to me.'" So, kind of stop there for a second, you kind of understand the story, right? Now what happens? Well, let's see, verse 20, really important. "And God came to Balam at night and said to him, 'If the men have come to call you, rise, go with them, but only do what I tell you.'" So Balam rose in the morning and saddled his donkey and went with the princes of Moab. Verse 22. "But God's anger was kindled because he went." Does that make sense to you? Right, so, verse 20, God comes to him and says, "If they ask you to come with them, go with them." Then, in verse 22, or verse 21, Balam gets up, goes with them, and then verse 22, God's mad with him because he went with them. You follow me? So what's going on here? What's going on here is that, we're gonna see, is that God looks at the intentions of the heart. So God knows that Balam does not have God's intentions in his heart when he leaves. And so he is angry, because he sees Balam's heart, and we'll see how it plays out. Verse 23. "And the donkey saw the angel of the Lord standing in the road, with a drawn sword in his hand; and the donkey turned aside out of the road and went into the field. And Balam struck the donkey to turn her into the road." So we know this, right? So he strikes the donkey three times, and then, later on, verse 28, now the donkey starts to speak, right? Verse 28. "What have I done to you, that you have struck me these three times?" And Balam said to the donkey, "Holy cow, a talking donkey." No, he didn't say that. I would've said that. "Because you've made me a fool, made a fool of me. I wish I had a sword in my hand, for then I would kill you." And the donkey said to Balam, "Am I not your donkey, on which you have ridden all your life, long to this day? Is it my habit to treat you this way?" And he said, "No." "Then the Lord opened the eyes of Balam, and he saw the angel of the Lord standing in the way, with his drawn sword in his hand." What kind of sword do you think he probably had? A double-edged sword, okay? "And he bowed down and fell on his face. And the angel of the Lord said to him, 'Why have you struck your donkey these three times? Behold, I have come out to oppose you, because your way is perverse before me.'" So that he knows his heart. Verse 33. "The donkey saw me and turned aside before me these three times; if she had not turned aside from me, surely, just now, I would have killed you and let her live. Then Balam said to the angel of the Lord, 'I have sinned, for I did not know that you stood in the road against me. Now therefore, if it is evil in your sight, I will turn back.'" "And the angel of the Lord said to Balam, 'Go with the men, but speak only the word that I tell you.'" Okay, so I'm gonna just fast forward this story. So chapter 23 is, that's one oracle of Balam. So he goes to the Lord, and the Lord comes back, and this is what you're gonna do, and in verse 8, this is chapter 23, verse 8. "How can I curse whom God has not cursed? How can I denounce whom the Lord has not denounced?" So Balak is expecting Balam to curse the people, but instead, he blesses the people. Okay? Then in the second oracle, God tells him, verse 16, "Return to Balak, and thus you shall speak." And in verse 20, he says, "Behold, I receive a command to bless. He is blessed, and I cannot revoke it." So again, Balam blesses God's people. Verse 25 of chapter 23. "And Balak said to Balam, 'Do not curse them at all, and do not bless them at all.' But Balam answered, 'Did I not tell you all that the Lord says, that I must do?'" Then verse 28, this is really important for the story of the Old Testament, and really, our story as well. "So Balak took Balam to the top of Peor, which overlooks the desert. And Balam said to Balak, 'Build for me seven altars, and prepare for me here seven bulls and rams.'" So they're setting up this sacrifice. And then what happens is, is Balam blesses God's people again, for the third time. Now, turn to chapter 20, to Numbers, chapter 25. Verse 1. This is the turning point for Israel in the Old Testament. "While Israel lived in Shattim, the people began to whore with the daughters of Moab." In other words, sexual immorality. Verse 2. "These invited the people to the sacrifices of their gods; and the people ate..." So they're eating food sacrificed idols, in other words, they're involved in pagan worship. "And the people ate and bowed down to their gods." The honeymoon is over. And that's what's happening here in Numbers, chapter 25. So turn again, just so you see, this is the rest of the story. Turn in your Bibles to Numbers 31, and this is verse 16. Here's the rest of the story. "Behold, these, on Balam's advice..." This is the daughters of Moab. "...on Balam's advice caused the people of Israel to act treacherously against the Lord in the incident of Peor, and so the plague came among the congregation of the Lord." So here's the story. So, to just summarize Numbers, chapter 22, and what Revelation, chapter 2, is gonna be talking about. So Balam comes, and he says, "You know what? I can't curse the people." But what he wants, is he wants the financial blessing. So what he does is, he says, "I can't go beyond what the Lord has said, Mr. Balak, king of Moab, but here's the deal. If you really want to curse them, here's what you do. You get them to act sexually immoral, and you get them to worship other gods. That's the secret. And that's exactly what happens." So that's the story of Balam. Now turn back in your Bibles to Revelation, chapter 2. So verse 14. "But I have a few things against you. You have some there that hold the teaching of Balam, who taught Balak to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel, so that they might eat food sacrificed to idols and practice sexual immorality." So this is not the actual Balam, right? This is a, these are people who are doing the very same thing that Balam was doing. And that is teaching people in the church, these are people inside the church, who are encouraging other people in the church to say, "Ah, it's fine. Don't worry about that. It's, you can be a follower of Jesus, and you can go ahead and go to the temple of Asclepius too. You can worship Jesus, and, you know, it would be socially unacceptable if we didn't at least go to the temple of Athena once in a while. Or it's, you know, you can worship Jesus, and you can also, you can also go to the temple of Zeus. That's what's going on. And it is alive and well in the church today, too, right? And our culture, all the time, is going to encourage us, "You know what? You can be a follower of Jesus, and do that on Sunday, but then Monday through Saturday, you know, do these other things." The scriptures are gonna point us to, again, in the Ten Commandments, "You shall know their gods before me." I mentioned to you, as we began this time, that in your handout, you see this, right? Just a second, Walt, you see this, and there is worship there. I told you at the beginning, that worship is a key component to Revelation, and who you worship is really important. And so I know a lot of times, I hear from people, "Ah, you know, Sunday mornings are the only times I can sleep in." I hear it all the time. I get it, and there's no judgment or guilt, but the question is, who are you putting first? What is that? If you're saying, "Ah, you know, I've gotta, I've gotta sleep in on Sunday morning," what does that say? Or what does it say that I'm gonna put kind of all these other things before God? We do it all the time, all the time. And we struggle with that, and so what worship is about, what being in the Word is about, is about pushing back on that. All right, yes. Walt wants to assure us that none of the meats, none of the meat prepared by the Holy Smokers has been sacrificed to idols. Amen to that. Amen, that's good. That is good. All right. Yeah, you gotta, that's great. Okay, so I want you to see the story of what's going on with Balam. And Balam is, you know, back in Numbers 22, in Revelation 2, was alive and well in the church, Balam is also alive and well, that representation of Balam is alive and well in the church as well. And so, that, the Lord Jesus calls us to repent of that, to turn away from that, okay? Questions on that? Makes sense? Really, really important stories, and again, the point is to know the story, okay? All right, verse 15. "So also you have some who hold the teachings of the Nicolaitans." So this was back in Ephesus. So the Nicolaitans were essentially people who said, "We're free to practice, or to express ourselves sexually any way we want." So we're gonna talk about this a little bit more in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, today in worship. Same thing, same thing of saying, like Paul quotes the culture that says, "Food is for the stomach, and stomach for the food." What he means by that, or what people meant by that when they said that, is expressing yourself sexually, or fulfilling your sexual desires, is no different than eating food when you're hungry. That would be the belief of the Nicolaitans. And the Nicolaitans were alive and well in the church in Revelation, chapter 2, and the Nicolaitans are alive and well in the church today. And so we have to just stay and remain faithful to the Word. All right, I want to just share with you one more thing I forgot to say. Turn in your Bibles really quickly to Matthew, chapter 6. I imagine you'll read, this is verse 24. I imagine you'll read Matthew, chapter 6, verse 24, before you ever read Numbers 22 again. So in your Bibles, here's what I want you to do. So Matthew, chapter 6, verse 24, says, "No one can serve two masters; for either he will hate the one and love the other, or he will be devoted to the one and despise the other." You cannot serve God and money, or mammon, or whatever your translation says. So what I want you to do, is just in the margins, or somewhere close to that, put right in there, "Balam," and then Numbers 22. So the story of Balam is really a real-life example of exactly what Jesus is saying in Matthew, chapter 6, verse 24. So Balam is the prime example of, you can't serve God and money. So Balam said, "I'm gonna serve, I'm gonna serve God." And if you saw Balam in the, on the street, if you sit next to him and worship, you'd probably say, "Balam's a good guy." But you cannot serve God and money, and Balam is a perfect example of that. All right, back to Revelation, chapter 2. So Sheri has a comment in her study Bible, is that for Matthew, chapter 6? Oh, no, in Revelation 22. So it is. Balam is a real-life example of a person who compromised, and in his compromise, guess what happened to a lot of people? They got hurt, and they fell into sin, and were destroyed.
Yeah, so Chris's question is, how is the king of, how is Balak acquainted with Balam? How does he know him? I don't know the answer to that, but here's what we do know, is we do know that people like Moab, they are very well aware that Jericho, you know, the walls came tumbling down, right? So everywhere that Israel goes, they conquer the people. And they see them on the horizon, and they see them coming, carrying the Ark of the Covenant in front of them, and Balak knows, "We're in big trouble." And so Balak, as probably any good king would, he says, "What? I gotta protect my people, because they're coming, and I've got all of these other kingdoms that have fallen in the wake of Israel coming in." And so, who knows how he got acquainted with Balam, but clearly, you know, Balam had some kind of a reputation for knowing that, hey, if he curses you, you're cursed. If he blesses you, you're blessed. And so, that's my military strategy against these people, because we can't stand against them. Yeah, okay? Back to Revelation, chapter 2. So verse 16, Jesus says, "Therefore repent. If not, I will come to you soon, and war against them with the sword of my mouth." That is the two-edged sword. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. To the one who conquers, I will give some of the hidden manna, and I will give him a white stone, with a new name written on the stone, that no one knows except the one who receives it." So again, what does that mean? Most scholars aren't really sure, but again, it would be like, you know, when you were given, think of it like an invitation. So somebody comes and gives you an invitation, written on a white stone, and it's a great privilege to receive that, okay? So, questions, anybody? Before we close? Again, if you have a question, go ahead and write it on a note card, put it in this basket, and we'll try to get to those as we go, all right? Any last-minute questions? All right, let's pray. All right, let's pray. "O Lord, we come before you, and we do acknowledge that like Pergamum, we also make compromises. We try to add the Lord Jesus to the many lists of priorities that we have. And Lord, we acknowledge that, and we repent of that, and we ask your mercy upon that. We ask you to reveal to us through your Word those ways that we need to repent and turn away from those idols that we've constructed. Many of them are not of stone and marble or wood, but they're ones that we've created in our own heart. And so, Lord, I pray that we would do that, you would reveal that, and we would trust in you alone. We pray in the name of Jesus, amen." All right, everybody, we'll see you next week.